Hi, everybody. My name is Wendy Salvati. I'm a certified land use planner. I have been practicing in my field for just over 30 years, and I've provided consultation services to a number of planning boards in the Western New York area. I am a member of the Town of Clarence Planning Board. I've been on their board for 10 years, or more, actually, almost 15 years. And I'm also a past president for the New York Planning Federation, if any of you are familiar with that group. So, welcome. I'm glad you're joining us today. Okay, so, oops, too far. Planning boards are governed under New York State law. And so that would be Article 16 of New York State Town Law, Article 7 of New York State Village Law, and Article 3 of General City Law. The municipal planning body, which could be your town board, your village board, trustees, or your city council, has the authority to establish the planning board. And it can assign it with recommending power or approval power. So pursuant to state law, the governing body appoints a planning board members to a term equal to the total number of members that comprise the board. So if you have five members, you have a five-year term. Seven members, seven-year term. In communities that are heavily agricultural and contain agricultural districts, the legislative body can appoint a representative from the agricultural community to sit on the planning board. Again, the governing body can decide whether it wants the board to have recommending power or approval power. And it could give you approval power for certain things and recommending power for others. Depends on what they deem important to them. Municipalities do not have to have a planning board. If they have adopted zoning regulations, they have to have a zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board can be given the authority to undertake the functions of a planning board. The governing body can also adopt local regulations that would allow for the appointment of alternates to the planning board. Alternates are appointed in the same manner as regular planning board members, and they serve a term which would be established in the local regulations. Alternates may serve in the event of a conflict of interest on the part of a board member. So if the application before your board is being presented by your brother-in-law, or if you happen to live next door to the project site, things like that, that are conflicts of interest, you want to recuse yourself, in that case, an alternate can come in and represent you at the meeting. If it's specified in your local regulations, alternates can also serve in the place of a board member who is absent, so that you can make sure you have quorum. And alternates possess all the powers and responsibilities of fully appointed planning board members. Therefore, alternates should attend meetings and be prepared to participate as needed. Pursuant to the Public Officers' Law, as an appointed member of the planning board, you must take an oath of office within 30 days of your appointment. The New York State Oath of Office reads, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the planning board according to the best of my ability." This oath is typically taken before the municipal clerk. Some communities allow the planning board members to sign an oath card or a form, which must be executed in the presence of the clerk. Finally, the municipal governing body has the power to remove a member from the board for cause and after sufficient notice. Examples include repeated ethical transgressions, such as not revealing substantial private interests in applications before the board, a criminal conviction, or a significant number of offenses that constitutes neglected duties. Your community may have established standards for conduct for board members. And if so, you should check them out, and you should abide by them. If a vacancy occurs on the planning board because of reasons other than the expiration of a term of office, the governing body shall appoint a new member to complete the unexpired term. To qualify to be on a planning board, you must be 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the community where you serve. Town board members cannot be appointed to the planning board. Other considerations that come into play for appointing someone on the planning board include a demonstrated interest on your part to serve on the board. You may possess certain technical skills or experience. You may meet certain needs of the community. And sometimes, there are political considerations. Although it's really best to try and keep politics out of the decision-making process and out of your performance on the board. In many cases, the community will advertise the open position, and interested parties must apply. And then they would be interviewed by the governing body to fill the position on the board. So, some basics. In order to hold an official meeting of the planning board, you have to have quorum, which is a majority of the planning board members present at the meeting to take action on published agenda items. So if you have a seven-member board, you have to have at least four people present. If you have a five-member board, you need three, you need the majority. It's important to remember that any time a quorum of the board is gathered to conduct the business of the board, it constitutes a meeting of the board in accordance with the Open Meetings Law, which is Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law. So this includes site visits, or even getting together for coffee. Anytime you have a quorum of the board when specifics of a project are being discussed, that is subject to open meeting regulations, and it must be advertised. So you have to be aware of this, because it also includes emailing back and forth, or using other forms of social media. You have discussions, email chats with a quorum of your board, then that's an open meeting. There is case law that finds that a scheduled site visit does not constitute a meeting if its purpose is not for anything other than to observe and acquire information. You cross the line if there's any discussion of specific elements of a project that will affect decision-making. So you need to employ caution, because sometimes, planning boards get together, and a group of members may decide to go out and look at a site, depending on whatever the project is. All meetings of the planning board must be advertised through a public notice in advance of the meeting. This does not have to be an official, published legal notice. Many communities place notices in newspapers, on their website, through hard copy postings in the town, village, or city hall, or they do all of those things. The postings should include the date, time, and location of the meeting, and the agenda listing of items, so that it indicates the matters that are being decided before the board. If you're using video conferencing to conduct planning board meetings, which is becoming the norm, such meetings must offer an opportunity for the public to attend, listen, and observe. Virtual public meetings must provide a means for gathering public comments. So if you're having an actual public hearing, I'm sorry, not a meeting, a virtual public hearing, that has to have a means to gather public comments. The use of video conferencing must be indicated in the public notice. So when you're indicating the location for the meeting and the fact that the public can attend, but it's a video conferencing format. If the meeting is being streamed live over the internet, which some communities are doing, the public notice also must provide the internet address of the website for the public streaming, so that the residents or others can participate. Anytime a public notice is going out, there are differing requirements for giving notice of a meeting to the local media of general circulation, depending on what the purpose of the notice is. If it's to advertise a public hearing, for instance, you need a minimum of five days' notice. So your community should be familiar with the requirements for public noticing. Your community should also have set procedures for conducting planning board meetings. So you should have procedures for how do you call meetings? When do you know you should have a meeting? How are your agendas set? How do you confirm attendance? And you're having a quorum, procedures for setting up a room and preparing for those meetings. Your building department, your municipal clerk, or for any community that may have a planning office, depends on how your community is set up, that entity should distribute meeting packets, meaning the meeting agenda and the project documentation for whatever is on that agenda. Make sure the board gets that information prior to the meeting, so that the board members have ample time to review and prepare for meetings. So whoever is responsible for putting the board materials together should make sure that applications are complete, have all the required documents been received. Typically, if you are doing site plan review in your community, you have adopted site plan review regulations. And most often, those regulations indicate the materials that need to be submitted by an applicant for site plan approval. So you want to make sure you have everything, survey, the application, copies of plans, whatever else you require. If the application is incomplete, it's going to add time to the approval process. So you really don't want to have applications that are incomplete. Once the agenda is complete, then it should be taken up and decided upon by the board. As a planning board member, you should really take your position seriously and know what is required by your community. So you should learn your local processes and procedures. If necessary, talk to your chairperson and have them explain to you what it is, how the board operates. If you cannot make a planning board meeting, you must be sure to advise the community or the planning board chairperson beforehand, so that quorum is ensured and any other necessary preparations can be made. And you should be prepared for your meetings. So you should review the materials for every agenda item, whether it's a site plan or a subdivision plan, look at the applications, the surveys, all the supporting documents, studies, photographs, whatever is provided by the applicant. And go out and do your site visits. See what this site is, and its conditions, its surround, it, what are the roadway conditions. And remember, go with others. Be cognizant of all the meeting requirements. And at the planning board meetings, don't be afraid to ask questions of the applicant, so that will help you understand what they're actually planning to do. Sometimes, it's not always clear. In accordance with state law, all planning board members are required to receive a minimum of four hours of training annually. You cannot be reappointed to the planning board if you have not fulfilled your annual training requirements. So take advantage of training sessions offered by the county planning agencies, your regional planning organizations, New York State Department of State and others. Training helps you learn your job, and it will make you a better planning board member. So I know that this webinar today is part of, take 11, and 11 sessions that are to us to take advantage of. It'll take you four hours of training, and it'll help you learn about the things that you do in planning, whatever. It should also be noted that your governing body, by resolution, can choose to waive or modify training requirements if they deem it is in the best interest of the community. I think most communities are planning board to get those four hours of training. As a public officer, you must act and perform your planning board duties in an ethical and impartial manner. This is really important. In accordance with Article 18 of the New York State General Municipal Law, every municipality is required to adopt its own code of ethics and must require employees and officers who are to the planning board members to file an annual disclosure statement. You should consult your municipal code to understand the local access requirements, which could be more stringent than our current. Certain requirements, ethical conduct, that are governed by General Municipal Law article 18 include, you cannot have direct contractual conflicts of interest. You cannot directly or indirectly solicit, accept, or receive a gift valued over $75 annually from an applicant or anyone else involved in a project. So, because that can be used to infer if you're expected, if it's expected to influence your decisions, fairly wise to not have any interaction with applicants that come before you. Do not talk to them about how they're on your board, on your planning board agenda. So also, any application before the board must disclose the name, address, and the extent of any interest a board member may have with the application or in the application. So you really don't want to, you really need to disclose these things, because it's a direct conflict of interest. So in general, again, it's really good practice to not discuss matters before the planning board with others outside of the board, and to not talk with them. So don't take phone calls, or meetings, or emails. Instead, if an applicant contact you, refer to your planning board chairman, or your building department, or your planning board, whoever oversees the planning board duties and actions. Meeting basics. Some boards hold a work session where they will review and discuss project applications and ask questions, depending on the number of agenda items that they deal with each month. Some planning boards are busier than others. Typically, there is no formal decision-making that occurs at work sessions. When a quorum of the board is present, a work session is public meeting and is subject to the Open Meetings Law. So those work sessions should be advertised and open to the public.
If it's really choppy and hard to hear, would you be able to slow down just a little bit?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, I'm sorry. So again, at a work session, typically, no formal decision-making is done. And at those work sessions, although they may be considered open meetings, you do not have to allow any public comments or interaction, and you don't have to allow interaction with the applicants. It's a work session just to discuss what's on your agenda and how you prepare for the actual meeting. There's no decision-making done in those cases. The regular meetings of the board are the means for taking action on agenda items. Meetings are conducted by the chairperson, and there's typically a vice-chairperson who is designated so that they can conduct proceedings in the absence of the chairperson. And at the meeting, the chairperson should call the meeting director, open up the meeting, welcome the public, inform the audience at the onset of each meeting what the meeting format and procedures are. So you indicate that the chairman may announce the agenda item, then allow applicants to offer additional comments and information, allow the planning board to ask questions of the applicant, and you might open the floor and allow public comments, or officially open and close a public hearing, and letting the public know this is what, how we are going to operate tonight at our meeting. All actions of the planning board must be made by formal resolution with a second and a full vote of all members present. You have to have public hearings for subdivision and special use permits actions, as well as for the adoption or amendment of local ordinances or laws. So if the planning board is recommending board to your town, or village, or city board for updating or for someone who's taking into his own piece of property, you have to have a public hearing for that as well. The public hearing affords presence to other interested parties that may be affected by the proposed action, an opportunity to have their views heard, to ask questions, and to otherwise offer comments on the project that is with the board. After a public hearing is closed, the board may choose to keep the record or keep the item open for the acceptance of written comments. You do not have to have public hearings for site plan review actions. They're not subject to official public hearing requirements, but it is a good practice to allow public input when you have a site plan before the board. Some planning boards refer project applications to other boards or committees, depending on the structure of your community. For example, there may be an architectural review board, historic preservation committee, a traffic safety committee, a conservation advisory board, or you may send things to municipal, I'm sorry, municipal planning organization. Some communities may refer applications to the zoning board of appeals that may require variance before taking further action on the matter. Site plans and special use permits must be sent to the local county planning agency for review pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 239. You cannot take final action on an item until this referral is completed. In some counties, also review subdivision plans pursuant to General Municipal Law 239N. So you would have to send them copies of subdivision applications that you received, that they're, they're on. Planning boards make decisions on project applications by formal resolutions, to table the action, to make referrals, to approve the action, to approve the action with conditions, or to deny it. These decisions should be clear and made on the record. You should make a motion to table a matter where there is insufficient information to allow the board to move forward with the decision, or where the application needs more time to make revisions to the plans, or if the board feels it needs more time to review the information that has been provided. Motions to refer are made when it is determined that actions should be forwarded to another review body for additional review or comments. A motion to approve where the planning board has determined that based on discussions, review of materials, comments received, and other evidence in the record, it has sufficient reasoning to warrant approval of the action. A motion to approve with conditions where it is determined that certain reasonable conditions are required to mitigate an action, rate about desired results, or reduce potential impacts for requiring vegetated buffers or additional landscaping, adding additional or less parking, reducing the number of curb cuts, or having a greater distance between curb cuts or curb cuts and intersection, and also requiring dark sky compliant lighting or streaming dumpsters. Those are all examples of ways that you can condition a site plan to mitigate impacts. You can request changes to approve the design if that protects the public interest. Motions to deny an action.
Wendy?
Yes?
You're still breaking up really bad for some reason.
I don't know why. I don't know why. I have a fan going in the background. I don't know if that, I turned it off. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, is that better now?
Okay. Well, let's see what happens.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so again, a motion to deny must be substantiated by clear reasoning. The failure of a motion to approve a project is not a recommendation to deny. You have to have a separate motion to deny, and you have to make that after the first motion fails. So if you have a motion to approve, and that motion fails, then you have to have a motion to deny. Improving applications for subdivisions, site plans, or special use permits, conditions may be attached, as long as they are reusable and are directly related and incidental to the proposed project. Conditions should be reviewed and discussed by the board prior to voting on the matter. So that can be something that you do if you have a work session. And it's important to strive to be consistent in your decision-making. So a lot of times, when you have actions before the board, you can think about how you handled similar actions, and how other applications or applicants were treated that had similar projects, so that you have consistency in your decision-making. And all of your motions and resolutions should be recorded verbatim in your meeting minutes. I will talk about meeting minutes in a little while, but meeting minutes, the meeting minutes don't have to be fully verbatim, but when you're making a motion, actions taken by the board, those have to be recorded exactly as seen. So when you're taking action on applications, your decisions of the planning board have to be objective, and they need to be made based on law and reliable facts and evidence contained in the record. You must allow everyone who wants to comment on a project the opportunity to do so. You can't deny anybody the right to speak. That is covered under open meetings requirements. And everyone has an opportunity to participate and offer comments, whether they do that in public at the meeting or in writing. And it doesn't matter who they are or where they live. So if you have someone who comes in from outside your community, you can't deny them an opportunity to speak on an agenda item just because they don't live in your town, or village, or in your city. You cannot deny anybody an opportunity to have input on an item. So you must balance the comments that you receive from the public with the applicant's information and any other evidence that you have in the record. And you have to make your decisions based on the merits of the project. You know, did we hear? You may hear things from the public that are valid, and you're going to hear things from the applicant that are valid. You may have studies done, and they provide you with facts. You have to look at all of that information. So you have to take a hard look and have a record that supports well-reasoned decisions. That's really important, because it doesn't happen a lot. But if an applicant ever decides to take legal action because you didn't approve their project, you have a strong record that supports what you did. You cannot vote against a project. You cannot vote against a project based on personal preferences, opinions, or just because you don't like it. If it meets the law and there is evidence. I apologize. If it meets the law and there's evidence in the record. Uh, then you have, uh. Then you have to support approval of the project. It is difficult to deny a project. Without opening up the town to potential legal actions if it's not based on the merits of the project. You want to be careful that you're not making what are called arbitrary and capricious decisions. Your decisions have to be based on the law and based on facts. It's also important. That the facts justify the board's decision because your decision becomes part of the record. That contains at a minimum, the issues considered by the board. The actions taken by the board on an issue and the reasons for the decision should all be part of the record. So all actions of the board must be recorded. The planning board should keep detailed minutes of all deliberations and decisions made for site plan. Subdivision and special use permit application as a historical record of the meeting. It is important to establish a record through questions and discussions held at the meeting. So that you demonstrate well reasoned decision making that will stand up in the courts. So you want to make sure you craft your resolutions well and enter pertinent information on the question. So when someone makes a motion to approve, you get your second, have some discussion on the question. Note. Certain relevant things about the project that indicate why there was a motion to approve. So that again, because those motions and that information are being recorded verbatim. It's important that that, that that gets put on the record. So while your meeting minutes, again, they don't, all of the minutes don't have to be verbatim. You don't have to have all of the discussion. But you want a written narrative of the actions taken by the board. So that at a minimum, you're recording who was present and absent at the meeting. A description of the matter being considered by the board. The deciding action taken by the board. The reason for the decision and how the board members voted. The motion is the only part that must be recorded verbatim, emphasizing that again. So the facts in the record should clearly justify the board's decisions. The file record. File in the town. Should include the applications and some supporting documentation, whether that's property surveys, reports, studies. Written public comments that were submitted to the town or other correspondence that you might get from. Uh, state or regional agencies. Photographs, meeting minutes, and any other documentation that's relevant to the matter. That should all be kept in a project file. Um, you should also keep seeker documentation. I'm going to talk about seeker in a few minutes. But when you, you're making decisions for state environmental quality review, you should keep that documentation in the record as well. Uh, meeting minutes should be approved at your next board meeting. And any amendments to the, the meeting minutes required board approval. So if you amend the minutes, you have to have a vote on that. And then approved minutes must be made available, they must be made available to the public. Within two weeks after the close of the meeting and that's open meetings law requirement. So your planning board duties and project review. Planning board responsibilities can be more wide ranging depending on the community and the, the desires of your governing body. How much approval power you may have. Planning boards can act in the capacity of approval bodies or recommending bodies for site plan review. And special use permit applications. They're solely recommending bodies for any zoning requests, re-zonings that you are reviewing for your governing body. For subdivision, however, planning boards have sole authority to approve subdivision plots. That has been vested with the planning board and I'll talk about that more. Planning boards can provide review and recommendations for zoning amendments, as I said. They can also be assigned special projects or assignments to act as an advisory body. That could be for updating your comprehensive plan or preparing comprehensive plans for the community. To be for undertaking updates to your zoning code. Or updates, uh, or the development of other regulations or plans for the community. So you can use the planning board to do more than just project review and approval or recommendations. So depending on your approval authority, planning boards must also issue seeker determinations or recommendations to the governing body. And I mentioned that before and I'll talk about that more in a minute. So subdivision approval. This is regulated under town law article sixteen, section two seventy six and seventy seven. Village law article seven, section seven twenty eight and seven thirty. And general city law article three, sections thirty two and thirty three. Subdivision is the division of a parcel of land into smaller parcels for the purpose of sale. Transfer of ownership or development with or without streets. In accordance with your local zoning regulations. Subdivision power is vested in the planning board. Because the statutes envision the control of land subdivision. To be fundamentally an exercise in planning for the growth of the community. So the planning board was deemed the best body to be making those approval decisions. To do subdivision, your community must have adopted subdivision regulations in place. To guide the review and decision making. And all lots that are proposed on a subdivision plat must meet the zoning lot size requirements. Subdivision regulations are typically standalone laws in each town code. But I have seen places where they have been incorporated as part of zoning regulations. But regardless of where they are in the code, you can't do subdivision if you don't have subdivision regulations. Many communities regulate minor and major subdivision. With a minor subdivision typically being for the creation of up to four lots off of a parent parcel. And that's usually frontage lot development. Or major subdivisions, which is typically five or more lots. Or sometimes less than four lots where the installation of infrastructure might be required. It would depend on the configuration of the lot. You could be doing less than five lots, but you might have to put a road in because of the way you need to get off the highway to get lots in. Some communities don't regulate lot splits that are less than five lots. They may only have major subdivisions, so they only have approval issued for five or more lots in a, in a subdivision project. It's important to remember that subdivision is not zoning. It cannot be used to control lot size, lot dimensions, or the use of the land. Subdivision is focused on the design of the site and lot layout. As well as proposed infrastructure improvements to the site. Subdivision, particularly major subdivision. Is a two step process with approvals issued for preliminary plat and final plat. Some communities may also allow sketch plan approval as a very preliminary first step. Which is undertaken prior to preliminary plat. Which, uh, the sketch plan is really just to show you a basic layout. Here's how we think we want to do the lots and is the lead into preliminary plat approval. Final plat is the finished lot layout. And it includes the infrastructure extensions, the roads, all of the things would be included on that plan. As proposed for construction. Subdivision plats must be signed and sealed by a design professional, typically an engineer. Subdivisions can be approved with conditions. Subdivision approval requires an official public hearing to get the comments from residents. And others that may be potentially affected by the project. In some communities, as I mentioned earlier, subdivision applications must be referred to the local county planning agency. For review and comments in accordance with general municipal law two thirty nine M requirements. Site plan review. This is regulated under town law article sixteen, section two seventy four A. Village law article seven, section seven twenty five A. And general city law article three, section twenty seven A. Uh, local communities are permitted by the state, but they're not required to adopt site plan review regulations. Site plan approval primarily applies to commercial development, but there may. Be cases where you may have multifamily or mixed use development projects that would be subject to review depending on your local regulations. Planning boards can be the approval or the recommending bodies for site plan review. The process and procedures for site plan approval are set forth in local regulations, which typically that's would be your zoning ordinance. Site designs must comply with zoning regulations and requirements. And site plan regulations typically contain a series of elements. Such as show where the buildings or building or buildings would be located. What are the site dimensions? What's the lot coverage? And that would all be specified in your zoning setbacks. Where's the parking and site access? That should be illustrated on the site plan and all of this should be explained in an application and narrative submission. Uh, for the site plan review and approval. Other information may be required, such as a property survey. Environmental investigations for say wetland delineation or archaeological surveys. There may also be technical analysis such as a traffic study. So all of that is part of your application package and you should receive anything that is submitted. For a project, uh, for your review before you decide on that project. You should also consider other design aspects such as landscaping, signage. Pedestrian movement and internal vehicular circulation. The location of peripheral elements such as dumpsters, loading areas and mechanical, mechanical equipment. And also site lighting, require that it's dark sky compliant, preserve your dark skies. And all of these elements should be shown on your site plan. So the planning board should request the full extent of information deemed necessary. To allow for a well reasoned decision and a seeker determination. A site plan can be a series of plans that illustrate the various components or just one plan that shows all the elements. It depends on how big or complicated the project, uh, might be. Site plans must be referred to the local county planning agency for review and comments in accordance with general municipal law two thirty nine M requirements. If the proposed site plan meets local zoning and site plan standards, it must be approved. Site plans can be approved with conditions that are reasonable and aimed at mitigating potential impacts of development. A site plan can be denied where substantial evidence shows that the proposed project. Would have an adverse impact on public health, safety, and welfare. If you deny a site plan, the applicant, the applicant can resubmit a newer revised plan for the project. Unlike subdivision review, site plan approval is typically a one step process. Unless revisions are requested requiring follow up review by the planning board. Site plan approval does not require a formal public hearing, but public comments are encouraged as part of the process. Special use permits. Regulated under town law article sixteen, section two seventy four B. Village law article seven, section seven twenty five B. And general city law article three, section twenty seven B. Special use permits are also known as conditional permits or special exception use permits. The planning board can be the approval or the recommending body for these actions. Actions requiring a special. Permit are not as of right uses under the law. They're subject to specific requirements that are imposed to add flexibility to the zoning law. To consider use compatibility and to ensure that the proposed project is undertaken in harmony with surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Uses that are allowed by special permit must be listed under each zoning district where they are allowed. And the zoning regulations must contain clear standards to guide the planning board in the evaluation of the special use permit requests. So in your zoning, you'll have your list of things that are allowed. Uh, that are listed as permitted uses and then there may be a list of a few things that are allowed by special use permit. So the, if the applicant can demonstrate that the site design can meet the standards. The special use permit should be issued. Special use permits can be conditioned, but the conditions must be reasonable and related to the subject property.
Wendy?
Yes?
Did you want to wait till the end for all the questions?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
If, if that's okay, yes.
Yeah, I just seen a hand raised, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'd love to wait till the end. Thank you. Okay, so special use requests do require a, an official public hearing to gather comments from residents and others that are potentially impacted by the project. State environmental quality review or seeker. That's governed under the state environmental quality review act. Seeker is required for all actions taken by the planning board. And is built on the recognition that we are stewards of the environment. And must include environmental considerations in our decision making processes. So seeker applies to all actions that require an approval, a permit, or funding. Seeker review must be initiated by the planning board and requires the designation of a lead agency. Regardless of whether that's the planning board or not. You could be a recommending body to the town board, but you could still do the seeker review for them. And recommend that they be designated as the lead agent on the project because they would ultimately approve the project. An environmental assessment form must be completed for all actions subject to seeker review. And seeker actions are ranked on their potential impacts. So this includes type one actions, type two actions, and unlisted actions. With the type two actions considered to have no potential impacts and they would be exempt from review. For unlisted and type one actions, the board has to determine whether the proposed action. May have a significant adverse impact on the environment. This includes land, water resources, flora and fauna, noise, agricultural resources. Cultural resources like historic scenic or archeological, archaeology, archeologic resources. Recreational resources, public infrastructure. recreational resources, public infrastructure and services, community character, and human health. The board has to issue or recommend the issuance of a determination of significance that indicates the extent of the potential impacts. A negative declaration is a finding that the proposed action is not expected to result in significant potential adverse impacts to the environment, and therefore, no further review would be required. A positive declaration. If you think by looking at your environmental assessment form and other things, that this project is large and it could have large impacts, then you want more analysis. So you would issue a positive declaration that indicates that more extensive review is needed to evaluate and mitigate potential adverse impacts, whether that's traffic, water quality, the loss of habitat, things like that. So this means that an environmental impact statement would be required. In some cases, you could, prior to making your determination of significance, prior to issuing a negative or positive declaration, you could ask the applicant to give you an expanded environmental analysis, where they have to give you more information on specific things. Maybe you have more concerns about traffic, or the loss of open space, or noise, or water quality. You would ask them to do studies, get you that wetland delineation, get you the things that you feel that you need to comfortably say the project will not have an adverse impact on the environment. And so you have to have a determination of significance done before the project can move forward and be approved. Dealing with the public. Meetings are conducted in a public setting, and you will hear comments from the public at almost every meeting. You will hear from those who oppose or support the project, from neighbors who fear the change and don't want to be exposed to potential impacts, whether that's traffic, or the loss of vegetation, or just new development in general. Some community concerns are valid, some are just NIMBY or not in my backyard. You're also going to hear from professionals or experts who will attest to the validity and the limited impacts of the project. These opinions could likely be in sharp contrast to that that you receive from the public, and their opinions might be supported by evidence in the record, by the studies and other things that you've requested. So your job is to balance these concerns and opinions in a respectful manner. You want to strive to employ high standards and ethics in your evaluation of a project. So you want to know your application and the materials. You want to read the supporting evidence and understand the facts and evaluate the information provided by the public. So there may be projects that you do not like. I can tell you if there have been projects I haven't liked, but if those projects meet all the requirements of the law and they're shown to not result in significant environmental impacts, the project cannot be denied. No matter how much you may have been moved by public concerns, if the evidence on the record indicates approval, you have to approve. If it meets the law, you have to approve. And sometimes the public doesn't always understand that. But you can, however, condition projects or ask for revisions to the site plan or the subdivision plat to lessen potential impacts. And in doing so, you are attempting to balance the interests of the public with the needs of the applicant. So and there's a number of ways that plans and projects can be revised and mitigated, where the applicant can still come away with what they want and make their economic return, and where the public is more accepting of the change. So skills for success in your role on the planning board. So first of all, if you're new or you're new to being a planning board member, you want to know your community. You want to drive around, become familiar with the neighborhoods, the commercial and industrial districts, the major and minor highways, the landscapes, the architecture, just your community character in general. Know your community. And get a copy of your comprehensive plan or other locally adopted plans. Is there an agricultural preservation plan? Is there an open space plan, a recreation plan? Whatever, become familiar with your local plans. So you know where the community is now and what's envisioned for the future. And learn about the dynamics of the community. What are the traffic conditions? Are there areas with problems? Is the community growing? Are there areas with development pressure? Is the population growing, declining, aging? And what's the composition of housing? Is there a need for more or certain types of housing? And don't forget about surrounding and adjoining communities when reviewing projects. Consider cross-border planning and potential impacts. How does the town or village next to you plan for the land that might sit just over the border? And is your project consistent with that? Get a copy of your local zoning ordinance, your zoning map, your subdivision regulations, other applicable regulations, and get to know those laws, particularly your zoning. If the community has other applicable regulations, such as historic preservation, architectural review, landscaping standards, commercial design standards, cluster development regulations, et cetera, get familiar with those things as well. Learn how to read surveys and site plans and subdivision plats and topographic and other types of maps in general. That knowledge is very helpful with your project review. Learn about significant environmental and natural features, such as streams and creeks, floodplains, wetlands, areas with steep slopes. Where are your hydro soils? Are there any significant habitat areas? Know your community in that respect. Also, learn who your partners are and where you can gain assistance as needed, such as the county planning department, state agencies, like the New York State Department of State, the DEC, the Department of Agriculture and Markets, even SHIPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. Check with statewide and regional planning agencies, such as Southern Tier West, or the New York Planning Federation, or the Association of Towns. There's also the New York Conference of Mayors for villages, your local soil and water conservation services. Even local universities can have departments or information available that could be of use to you. So get copies of regional plans and other information that you may be able to use in your position on the board. And then learn how to work with the public and with your associates so that you're treating everyone with respect and common courtesy. And you also want to be respectful of the opinions of others. Everybody has an opinion, and it may not be the same as yours, but you need to be tolerant and balance all of that out. So some final considerations. You want to remember that your decisions affect property rights and the future of your community. So you want to consider the big picture as well as site specifics. How will the decision for one site impact the community at large? Are there cumulative impacts of your decisions? Remember that you're a volunteer, and you're doing the best for the future of your community. So you want to practice wise decision-making and ethics, which is the best bet for fairness and well-reasoned decisions. Again, strive to be consistent with your processes and your decision-making. Treat all applicants the same. This helps to instill a level of fairness into the process and can prevent arbitrary decisions. Keep your head at times when your patience might be running thin or your motives and wisdoms may be unfairly judged. Again, you're making decisions that abide by the law, and the public may not like it, but you know that you're doing what's right. There are typically those who may not agree with your position. So just follow the law and base your decisions on the facts. Do what you believe is right, not what the applicant wants, or just what the public wants. And keep learning. There are numerous opportunities to learn about what you're doing. The more you learn, the more comfortable and effective you will be in your position on the board. There are numerous things that I spoke about in this presentation today, where entire presentations can be done on that subject. Presentations on site plan review alone, special use permits alone, subdivision alone, comprehensive planning, zoning, SEACR, referrals, open meetings and meeting procedures, all of those things. If you can get training sessions on those individual things, do it and learn. So I have some suggested resources for you as you move forward as a board member. The New York Planning Federation has a book. It's called The Short Course: Basic Guide for Planning Boards and Zoning Boards of Appeals in New York State. The New York State Office of Local Government Services has a wide range of online training programs and other services and publications. One of their publications is the James A. Kuhn Local Government Technical Series. That's published by the State's Division of Local Government, and I have the website here for that. There's a lot of great stuff that comes out of that technical series. Technical pieces on, again, all those subjects that I talked about, site plan review, subdivision. They also provide just a guide to the laws and regulations in New York State so you can learn about general municipal law, town law, village law, general city law, open meetings law. So I would really recommend that you look at the James A. Kuhn Local Government Technical Series. Sometimes it's kind of hard now because we're not getting together, but hopefully in the future, when we can get back out and go to training sessions that are public, then we could, a lot of times, if the DOS has a table set up at conferences or things, a lot of times they have these technical brochures that are available, and you can pick them up, but you can find them online for sure. Then there's a training course that's offered through Pace University Land Use Law Center and the New York Planning Federation. It's actually a course that the planning board can take together, and it's a number of elements that are all of these different topics. Comprehensive planning, zoning, site plan review, special use permits, subdivision, SEACR, other land use laws, very good training. And then also, there's a guide to procedures governing public meetings from the New York Planning Federation. And then the DEC has the SEACR handbook. Other suggested legal references would be New York State Town Law, Article 16, Village Law, Article 7, City Law, Article 3, the Open Meetings Law, the Public Officers Law, the Freedom of Information Law, and then also Robert's Rules of Orders for how you actually proceed with your planning. So with all that being said, now I will take questions. Sarah?
Okay. Can you see the questions on the?
Let's see.
Question and answer?
I have to stop sharing, and then I will see if I can bring up that screen. Questions and answers, okay. Can the microphone be adjusted? I hope that that got fixed, the sound issues. Sorry, sorry, sorry. To clarify, if a parcel owner wants to develop a subdivision, what is the role of the city planning department in the development of subdivisions? If the parcel owner does not deal with the city, just the board? Well, in the city, if the property owner has a piece of land that's large enough to divide into smaller parcels, the city would have to have subdivision regulations, and they would have to come into the city planning office or the building department, and they would have to request an application for subdivision. And then that application would have to be forwarded on to the planning board. The city would have those procedures specified somewhere in their code, but that would be the process that would be followed. The city would have to have subdivision regulations. The applicant would have to come in and request a subdivision application, and then would have to file that application and a plat plan, a subdivision layout plan, with the city. And that would be then sent on to the deciding body, whether that's the planning board or the city board itself. It depends on how the city has their procedures set up for review and approval. But because subdivision is a planning board approval only, it would have to go to the planning board. I hope that answers the question. So the city has to have subdivision regulations. The applicant has to file a subdivision plat and application that has to be forwarded to the city planning board or planning commission for review and approval. Let's see, what else? At what point does a city utility come in for site plan review? Lighting or other infrastructure is necessary for a project? Well, as part of your site plan application and also on your SEACR form, you should know how the property that is being requested for development, how does that property receive power? Is it getting power from the city utility services? Obviously, it would have public sewer, it would have public water. Who's providing the electricity? How are they going to bring that on to the site? You can ask the applicant to show you where the water lines come from, where the sewer lines would be extended from, and how they're going to bring power on to the site. Where are they going to set up their lighting standards? Where are they going to put their mechanical boxes for their electric generation equipment and those things? Because those are things you also want to look at, too. Are they going on the roof? Are they going on the ground next to the building? If they're on the roof, are you screening them? If they're on the ground, are you screening them?
Okay, so we're just doing questions and answers that way?
So I don't see any other questions unless people want to, unless you are allowing folks to jump in and ask questions, Sarah. There's a bunch of, there's 59 chats here.
No, we were just doing it through the Q and A.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you very much, Wendy. I appreciate you in the class and for putting up with me through the first one.
And I apologize for the audio issues. But I did give Sarah a copy of the presentation that she can provide, it's a PDF format. She can provide its copy of all the slides, and she can send it to anyone that contacts her and requests it.
Yes, I will send out certificates of attendance, and I will also forward you the presentation in the same email after this is over. And thank you again, everyone, for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Have a good rest of the day, Wendy. Thank you.
Everybody stay safe. Bye.
You too. Bye.